I want to call to order the special meeting of the Carabelle City Commission. It's Tuesday, January 26, 2019, and it's 1:30 PM. We're at the Carabelle City Hall in the location at 1206 Highway 98 East. I'd like to ask Commissioner Allen if he would please say the invitation and then we'll say the pledge of vengeance to the flag of your laws.
Heavenly Father, we're so grateful that we have this time together to discuss the things that pertain to this wonderful city you take care of us with. I ask you to be with us in our wisdom and judgment. If we might do that would be best for the future of our wonderful town. And we ask you to be with those that are unable to get out, those that remain in their homes, blessed and with healings and power. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen. Blessed are we, to the flag of the United States of America, in the true republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, then, we'll just move right into item one, special meeting. Item one, discussion of possible action regarding professional proposal for possible acquisition of summer camp water and sewer utility services to the city of Carabelle. We have Mr. John Curtis here, St. Joe Company Community Manager, for questions and answers. And then I see he's brought some handouts for us. And we also have Mr. Charlie Painter is here with us, our water and sewer superintendent, and Dan Hartman, of course, our attorney, and Mr. Russell Large and Kyle with him as well from Enogia, our engineers. Thank you.
Right now, I'll give my good support.
Yes, and if you need to, an easel there, we have an easel if you need that as well.
I think we can talk about from office. Madam Mayor, Misses, my name is John Curtis, and I am the representative for St. Joe. I am the community manager for Summer Camp, which is located just down the street from y'all. So, per the conversation we guess we had last month, and per a site visit that was held by City Carabelle's Utility Department and Engineer with my representative Shane Dudley, the discussion came about and we talked about was, what do we do with our utilities as we try to grow, as we plan to grow at Summer Camp? And one thing I came on board in September with St. Joe, and one of the first things I asked retain was, St. Joe's a development company, we're not a utility company. And so, we have a utility company, the St. James Island Utility Company, and right now we currently serve 21 houses, a commercial center that does not currently have a restaurant. And because our, the lack overflowing in our utility, our sewer plant's not even being used. We currently pump the lift stations instead of actually utilizing the sewer plant as designed. So, one of my jobs when I came to St. Joe was to, again, look at the community, figure out what we need to do to move the community forward. So, this morning I held a meeting with Franklin County Planner and discussed some of the items that I had talked previously with the mayor and her staff when they came to visit me. For example, we're planning to reopen a restaurant. We're planning to build a boat ramp. And in doing so, we're planning to build auxiliary buildings to that boat ramp. We're planning to expand and build out additional phases. Right now, we have 219 lots that are platted of the 499. We have 117 of those lots sold, but we only have 21 houses. So, the community, in a sense, looks like it's vacant, but actually it's, is built out. It's sold out almost a third of its, or a fourth of its total number of lots. My goal is to change that. This week, we're actually closing tomorrow with a builder who's going to come in and build six new homes, starting next month. I've got two other builders I'm working with who are going to come in and buy five to six lots at a time to build houses. And the goal is that we're going to start building in Summer Camp. And to do that, that brings down on the thought process of, what do we do with our utilities? So, we can continue as is. We have a water system, a really good water system, that we can utilize ourselves. But, again, I have one person who runs that facility. We have a company that we're working with to help manage it, that's the license holders. And then we have to continue on our sanitary sewer system, as is with pumping out lift stations. That is not an optimal solution moving forward. So, when I spoke with the mayor and her staff about some ideas, the thought would be is, how do we come up with a solution or a resolution where the city of Carabelle, who has a current utility plant, sewer and water systems, which are within the vicinity of Summer Camp, how do we work to connect those systems together to allow y'all to, which what municipality does is provide services, to allow us, St. Joe, and Summer Camp, the developer, do what we want to do, which is build homes and build a community, to support, be supported by your services? So, we had the discussion, and the thought is, is what's next? There's lots of questions, I know, from watching the video of this board from last time, and I'm here to answer as many questions I can. If I cannot answer them today, I will get back with you those answers. As I said to Commissioner Milnder, is that hopefully this is the first of many conversations we have moving forward to try to work together to build a better community for everybody. So, I'll answer questions, or if you have any direct questions to me, or Shane Dudley, we'll try to answer them today, or get back with you those answers.
Well, we thank you for coming. We appreciate it, you coming on our invitation. Would you go ahead and start out and explain each one of these?
Sure. Let's go to page three of the map, which is an overlay of the entire site. I imagine most of y'all are more familiar with the project than I am, because, again, y'all been here in the community and seen it kind of grow and expand. So, if you look at where the 319 and 98 meet, kind of the bush bong there. Right now, we have our west sector of development there. Almost that entire west phase, which is our Phase B, or Partial B as we call it, which is adjacent, is just west of our commercial sales center. That's almost entirely sold out. We have about 15 lots left in there to sell. So, we're looking at bringing on the next phases, which would be to the west of Partial B, which would be Partial A. But as you see, the area between Partial A and B, which is the white area, it's Plumber Beach Club. That's where we're working with the county and we're working with the Corps of Engineers to do our boat ramp. The county has approved a boat ramp for Summer Camp, so that has been done. Their comp plan has been amended, and at this point in time, it's just a matter of us working with, bringing on the right engineering firm and the right consultants to take it through approval. And that location of water there is probably the best optimal location based on, it was previously dredged by my saying back as far when the land was part of the military base, when they were training. So, it's a dredged area of water, and so, the Corps of Engineers likely to go ahead and approve it at that location compared to any other location on the site. So, to the west of that location, we have, we have preliminary platted lots. And so, we'll work with Franklin County to go ahead and bring those lots online. In doing that, we talked about, to the west of that is your last D-mark for your sewer plant. I guess it's a lift station at that location. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the, okay. The thought would be is that if we had that location, we could then work to tie our two systems together. And it's about approximately one mile worth of length that a forest main would have to go in. The one thing that someone, I worked, used to work previously for the city of Gainesville, so I understand when a municipality pulls a permit compared to a private developer pulling a permit, but it deals with DOT, by the way. So, the thought is, is that if we, as we move forward, we come up with solutions, if the plan is to tie our two systems together, is that work with y'all to pull the permit because, again, municipalities have a different route than a developer. And the goal is time is always of the essence when things like this try to do. But that would also allow us to start marketing and selling those lots, bring them online, and again, provide a direct source back into the sanitary sewer system. The water system, my understanding is also approximately in that same general area. So, the goal would be is, our wells are on the west side, on the northwest side of 98. So, the thought is to tie into our wells for our water system, which then tie back into our water plant, which is located on the east side of 319, across from our commercial property. You can see it located just next to the FSU Marina property on the, right in the central part of the map. So, we have a water plant there, and that water plant feeds the east and west sides of our development currently. And we have a, I would say it's probably a fairly robust water system, good quality water, good pressures. And so, the thought is, is that if we did work on a relationship, we could either, that could be run independently, can be tied back into your system, but there's multiple ways to work that. Also, we're working with FSU Marine Lab. They want to have tie-in to our water system and also our sewer system for their currently existing facility, as well as they're looking to, they're working on getting approval for a 30,000 square foot research facility on the north side of 98 on their property, which then would be tied back in as well to the water and sewer systems. I know one of the questions is, is their capacity, and what is that capacity going to be? As we bring on all these items, these are capacity that go back to your system, but I do not believe it'd be enough for us to set our system up as it's designed. We also have a commercial center, part of our PUD with this county, is that we're looking to bring on a hotel. Initially, the thought is to do, it's like a small 10-unit to 12-unit hotel, and it would be geared towards, you know, weekend, one-night kind of stays, people who just want to come down and visit but not want to rent a house. So, the thought would be is that we would build that in the commercial center, just east of our existing sales center and restaurant space. So, that would be also bring additional fluid to the system, as well as connection fees. If you head east along past FSU's Marine Lab, we come to Partial O, you'll see it's looking at double horseshoe. That would be the next phase of development that I would want to bring on, because it's proximity to the water and sewer connections. And then one of the discussions was, is that the sewer line past that point would need to be extended to forest main over to our east entrance, which is all the way to the far right side of the cage. And then it could connect with our forest main that, right now, currently goes all the way back to the sewer plant. So, we would do a bisect there and tie our east side into a new forest main that would be tied back to your west property, to your system, if we move forward. There's a lot of engineering design that would have to go into place this, and a lot of discussions, but the path forward is there, is, you know, if we can work together to try to deploy it. We're also planning to work with the city on the northeast quadrant of the 319 and 98. There's kind of that, an angle of the curvier. St. Joe owns property there that's outside of our Summer Camp PUD, and the goal is to rezone that commercial. And in doing so, we'll, the goal would be to bring a grocery store slash convenience store slash kind of catch-all for people who will want to stay in the area to provide services, as well as behind it locating homeowners RV and boat storage. Right now, currently, we do not have any place for homeowners to store their RVs or their boats if they come to the property. And so, the goal would be is designate a, designate area on the north side that would be back there, and again, it would be tied back in, but it would just be for storage. And then, moving forward, I would develop the rest of the east side over time, and tying back into our forest main system there, which then ultimately could be tied back to your forest main. So, this is not a project that's going to happen overnight. As y'all know, it's been sitting dormant for about 10 years, and I think that it can be built out in a timely manner, but 10 years probably is what I'm looking at built out, based on the current sales and events. So, what questions can I answer for y'all?
Well, I'll just follow up right quick with your build-out in 10 years. Are you talking about build-out of the entire, you said you had the 219 platted?
That's correct. I was being building out of the entire 499 lots.
Oh, the 400, and in 10 years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And these orange colored areas that you pointed out here to the west, towards our connection here, the end of our line?
Right.
And then this little horseshoe, how many lots are there?
There's, I believe, 58 and a Partial A, 57, 57, right now. We may lose one or two by when we do the boat ramp. And then, a Partial O, I believe there is 21 lots.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Right.
Thank you. And then, these areas you're going to concentrate on first?
That is correct. Well, because, again, the west side of the project is, again, 90% sold out, and so, I want to be able to do is bring lots that, the most viable lots on the west side, which also makes sense if we're going to tie them back into your system, would be on that Partial A.
John, in that Partial A, is that where 90% of your sale-out is? You said on the west end?
Partial B.
Partial B is what I thought.
Yeah, Partial B is where we currently have 98%, or 90% of sales there. But that remaining 57 lots to the west is Partial A.
Correct.
We bring that online, and those sales, I think, because it is gold frontage, and based on the location, I think we'll have the best return on sales. And so, the goal is, again, to build that momentum back up at Summer Camp. Again, a project that's been sitting dormant for 10 years, and what we need to do is rebuild, rebrand, and bring it back with a new look and feel to get people. The goal is also to be at homes in there in the low 300,000s, so that people actually can afford a place to be there.
Refresh my memory.
Yes, sir.
Partial A.
Yes, a Partial A.
Partial A is not, is it, or is it not a part of the original Summer Camp proposal?
Partial A is, actually, all the parcels you see here are all-
Are a part of?
Yes, sir. They're all part of the original PUD.
Right.
So, no plating, there's a preliminary plating that was recorded, again, per the planner's discussion this morning, and we would have to do a site plan approval and go through that process with the county to get those approved, and then final flat approved.
Like the 117 lots that are sold, and if you watched our video, then you saw that we were concerned about TAP fees, that pre-sold TAP fees. Has that happened on the 117 lots that are sold?
My understanding is that we only apply a TAP fee when they apply for a building permit. And so, of the 117, only 21, 22-
Yes.
22 homes have sold and been under permitted. So, those would only be the TAP fees. So, the remaining lots would still be paying a TAP fee-
Okay.
-to connect for water and sewer connections.
And do you all, did you all bring a list of your base rates and TAP fees with you? No, you don't have that with you today?
We can provide that information.
Okay. Are you all on a tiered rate system, where every 3,000 gallons or every 1,000 gallons-
Yes.
Yes, you are? Okay.
Right, for the water usage, yes.
Yes.
Yes, we are. Standard applicable for this city.
Water management district.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. You have a spray field location up there at your sewer?
Right.
I haven't been out there, I've just briefly seen your water plant.
So, and Shane could talk more about the sewer plant if you want to go into details. So, right now, the sewer plant, when we sold the adjacent property to the sewer plant two years ago, two or three years ago, that we kept access. We actually own the road access, and we own the property of the sewer plant. There is a spray field there, and we actually have a, what's the size of the tank system at the sewer plant?
Oh, the tanks itself?
Oh. You know, so good?
No.
Okay.
The capacity is?
But we have, you know, the capacity was originally designed for two projects, for Summer Camp and for the property that was going to be constructed on the river. That land was sold off to the homeowners, and therefore, it no longer has tied, or will never be tied back into the system. So, the plant was actually oversized substantially for its use. That's one reason why we never tied back, stayed on the connections and utilized the plant, because we don't create enough fluid to actually operate the plant today.
And so, in the beginning, you all talked about turning over the facilities, the entire facilities, the well, the wells that are to the east, to the west, the farthest west, and then the water plant, the water treatment plant, almost directly across from your commercial area, and then to the, to the east, the sewer plant. So, are you, are you, the easement, the roadways, the, how much land, you know, what are you all thinking about?
So, well, and again, the thought was, in the initial discussion, was, what do we do with this? You know, we don't want to own a sewer, water and sewer utility company. What are our options? And so, the question is, is how do we work on our relationship with City Carabelle, and what does that relationship end up being? Is it, you know, do we, do y'all manage our facilities that we own and maintain, but you manage and operate as, you know, or do we somehow work on a relationship where we transfer the ownership of those items to you? Those items, one, is above my pay grade, two is, that, but the options are there. The goal is that we tell them the solution that works for the city of Carabelle and for Summer Camp, and the homeowners of Summer Camp. Because that's the ultimate, is that they're going to be the ones who are going to be asking, you know, 20 years from now, who manages my water system? Who takes care of my sewer system? And the goal is, is come up with a plan. However that plan may turn out between us, that is still to be worked out. There's, again, we have three wells? Shane, two? Two wells. Two wells just over there on the west side of 319 and 98, and those tie back into our water plant, which is over on the east side. And then we have the sewer plant, which, again, we have a forest main that runs all the way there from the east side, but the east and west sides do not connect right now. So, we'd have to come up with a solution for that. And again, the solution would be is we tie into your system, is again, about one mile distance between where your D-mark is for your sewer plant lift station and where we would tie in. So, lots of details still to be discussed, and probably at an engineering level initially to see what the feasibility of these items are. But I will say from St. Joe's position is, we're here to talk, we're here to figure out a solution, and to try to figure out the best long-term for everybody.
What is, and, you know, as you say, John, running in my mind, there's a lot of hoops to jump through, a lot of questions that can't be ironed down right at this point, but talks can be initiated. What is the thoughts currently of the company's position on payment? I understand what you said about the public municipality. The permitting process might be a little bit easier than it is for private. But to pay for that one mile line?
I think that's-
Has there been some thoughtful into that already?
Absolutely. I mean, and here's why. I mean, I'm a, I'm a planner. I'm a guy that wants to know all the details about what next steps, and next steps after that, and next step after that. So, we've had those questions internally, and the question gets back to is, what's it going to cost? How's it going to benefit the both parties? Because, again, this relationship has to benefit both parties. And then, what, how soon do we have to do it? And how quickly does everything have to be kind of done? So, we're looking at all those aspects, costs, time, money, in a sense, money being the, how far out do we have to put something in? What is the city's position going to be? Someone who's worked for this company understands that, you know, if, long-term, you're going to be wanting to look at grant money to support, support the system and expand it if y'all take over it. So, again, we're looking at all of that aspect as well, because we have time right now in a sense. Nothing has to be done yesterday. So, the goal is that we work together, come up with a good plan, look at where the money's coming from, when the money needs to be spent, and what needs to go in the ground in the cities. Because it doesn't happen to happen overnight.
I agree with your statement. And leads into also the ownership part of it.
Agree. And so, the thought would be is to, again, evaluate the total plan, timing, and ownership. Because, again, my position, and this is me speaking, John Curtis, who works for St. Joe, has said to my bosses, we don't, this is the only utility company that we own and manage. And, you know, again, it's a, for us to try to do that is challenging. So, we want to do is make sure that we have the best resources available to the people we're selling homes, selling lots to. And that would mean is to bring in the right people who do manage, which is a government to be managing utility companies. When you own them, you manage them, it's, it's what cities do. It's a service that y'all provide. And so, the thought is, moving forward, is to come up with a plan, how that, that transfer could be done, and what does it entail?
I agree with that statement. Several years ago, we had gotten a document from the Northwest Water Management, and they recommended Carabelle being a regional supplier of water, so that we benefited from, rather than having many plants, have one or two central. And they were supposed to send me that document, it hadn't gotten in here yet. I thought that's what my father was telling me. But in those days, we had a good deal offered that they would build, y'all would build the pipe and just turn everything over to us. And that didn't fly too much then, because we said, well, you know, what's this going to go? We can't afford to do that, even if we got it free. So, but I am in favor of Carabelle being a regional water supply system and economy of effort. The extra numbers of businesses that would add to our effect would certainly create a tremendous amount of income, you know, minus expenses, to see how that would work out. But I am in favor in that sense of expanding our system and to our capacity. Our, the grant was given to us to build our system based on our becoming a regional process. So-
Well, and I agree-
We don't have that deal left, do we?
Not today. But doesn't we have a deal?
Can we talk about it?
Every, every day is a new deal. So, again, we all went through a downturn, we all kind of changed our business models, we all looked at things differently today. But moving forward, the goal is that St. Joe and City Carabelle can find a solution, and that's kind of why I'm here today. And I do appreciate and thank y'all for inviting me. Again, what we're trying to be is open with our partners, and the city is our partner, just like Franklin County is, to move Summer Camp forward and to create something there that would be of benefit, not just today, but 50 years from now or longer. And so, I agree that you need to have a regional water system. It makes sense, you can provide the services, again, long-term. And one thing I'll say is, municipalities are here forever. So, and y'all provide those services. Again, St. James Island Utility Company was created for the sole purpose of multiple projects, which that changed after the downturn. So, we're now, we've got to rethink where we are and what we need to do, but at the same time, I'm trying to partner up with y'all.
I am surprised at the largeness of your development here at the, when we were talking about this, all I knew about is that on the corner down there where you got some buildings.
Yes, sir. Actually, it's exciting, because it does sit back in, and a lot of it hasn't been developed. But the goal is, is that you see the big plan, the master plan, and my goal is to develop that. As I said, I'm looking at 10 years, and that's, you know, a little over 250 units to 60 units in 10 years. That's, I mean, I think it can be done and done the right way, and also, again, you know, bring it on gradually so that we can do about it.
So, but the main question is, and both Commissioner Milnder and Commissioner Allen have said, is the money and the, and the way that we could connect, first of all, the sewer from the, from the Sands condo area to your, your western area, excuse me, your, yes, your most western area?
Right. So the thought would be is, is again, working with your engineers and, and our engineers, is to come up with a solution that says, this is what it's going to cost. Because there's going to be some reworking of, uh, the force main at our, uh, lift station now, basically to reverse flow. Because currently our, our lift stations were designed to flow to the east on that side. So we're now reversing flow to flow back to the west. It can be done, it's just a matter of seeing now the engineers and come up with a plan that works, that's cost-effective. And then looking again at time and, and money, when it has to be spent and, and how it's spent. But again, if the plan is to move forward and tie in y'all, I think we can find a solution.
And then also the cost of tying into the wells, just to mention?
Yes, the same thing we do is do an evaluation, determine, working together to figure out what is the best plan? When does that plan need to occur? And what other steps need to occur before and after that connection is actually done?
I have a question, but it's, it's kind of trivial to, to the next step where we need to go. It would be answered in, in, uh, in the process of what we, what I think we're about to go through. And it has to do with, John, just quickly, I'll go ahead and propose it. You were talking about the very east end and the infrastructure in the ground. Did I understand you to say you do or do not have infrastructure for the sewage flow to come back to the west?
Currently, there is not, there's a, um, so, what, around the sales center chain, just, just west of the, or east of the bridge?
Just east of the, the driveway of the Marine Lab where it stops.
Yeah, so just east of the Marine...
But you're all the way back to the Marine Lab from the very east end of the development?
No, no, from the west side.
Okay.
So from the west side, we stop right now, our force main stops just past the Marine Lab.
Gotcha.
So, and it does not pick back up until the, the entrance to the east entrance. Um, the plan for us originally in the design was to take the force main through the, the property, back through the property. Uh, we would basically, uh, jack and bore under the wetland areas.
Understand.
And, and again, it's, it's not a cheap path to take. And so when we start talking with the staff from the city that there's a better alternative method to try to, to do this, that's more cost-effective. And the goal is to find the most cost-effective path moving forward and, and come up with a plan. Again, how we tie those two sections together, when we tie those together, can be tied in, how we develop some of the parcels adjacent so that the cost can be offset as well as connection fees put in.
Okay, just another consideration that I was thinking of.
The east, the east is tied to the wastewater plant itself. Put the whole property that's not tied together in the...
So I'm going to ask kind of a hard question. I'm trying to be, I don't, I want to be tactful now. Are you going to be able to start developing these lots and putting actual houses on them? Before you, do you, do you need to settle up your, your sewer issue, you know, who, how, because you can't, I'm... Right now, you're pumping out your lift stations as needed, daily, weekly, whatever, uh, with, just like we pump out a, a private residential septic tank. Can you continue to operate like that and, and sell out these, these in parcel A? You can continue to operate that way?
If we had to, yes. It's not ideal because we would do as a new lift station to collect parcel A. And then those, all those home sites in there would go into that lift station. And we would pump it out just like we're doing parcel B and the sales center and the, the east side of the property. It's not ideal. But the goal is, is that, and we would also work to tie parcel A to parcel B so that eventually win that, that sewer plant. Because the other option for us to look at right now is to tie the west side to the east side and then push everything back to the sewer plant. And then bring in a small package system or a skid system to the sewer plant. And using that, because again, it's a much smaller use of system. And, but again, there's costs associated. Um, so the question is, where is the best use of our money being spent? And again, if the long-term plan is to do something totally radically different than what was originally designed, then let's look at where, where we put our money. But yes, it's not going to stop me from bringing those other parcels online. My goal on, from my meeting this morning with the city, the county planner, is to start working our engineers to do the final flat designs, the final site, civil designs, and to bring those parcels online so that we can actually, uh, hopefully, six to nine months from now, I'll be marketing and building on those parcels.
Yeah, we hope the sales will pick up enough to do that.
I think they will. Actually, based on the people I've talked with who have been in this market for years, they feel like this is a great place for them to be. Uh, they kind of, one fellow has described it as that diamond in the rough that has been forgotten.
Well, I agree. And, and from a positive standpoint, I really, I hope it goes that way.
Certainly.
I was sitting on Franklin County Planning and Sowing Board and approved this, uh, when it happened. And there was an excitement then. And I still want to maintain that excitement that Summer Camp grows and this area grows from a resident and a citizen standpoint, not just a city commissioner standpoint. But anyway, there was excitement there for that to grow. And then things happen in our lives. And we, we got to project ahead, we have, ahead and look forward, but they're not always certain. So we have to look at those and trot away things, that is what we get.
And that's one reason why, the, the, one of the game changers that's going to change Summer Camp is the boat ramp. And the potential for the convenience grocery store there. Uh, because those will then drive more people. We're also looking to do a little RV center on the north side, uh, where we take some of our old lots, we flat the lots. But instead of building houses, we work with the county to go ahead and allow us to have people park their RVs instead of building house right away. And again, the goal is to get people to the community to see what an awesome place it is. And so there are more ways we can drive people to the community to be able to see those things. And again, one of the, the opportunities is here is to say, we're tied in with City Caribou Utilities. And that's just, it isn't a selling factor that we could use long-term.
With your, you know, but...
Thank you.
Now, when you, when you spoke with Mr., the planner, Mr. Currington?
Yes.
Okay. Then, I didn't know if Mr. Pierce was sitting in or what.
He was there as well, but not for the time being.
Then, and, and you mentioned, so the boat ramp is approved?
Yes, yes.
And that's good.
The county actually has modified their comp plan to include that in that.
Very good. Did you utter the words, anything about, did you all discuss the convenience store or was that...
Yes, we did.
Uh-huh.
All right, so that piece of parcel was outside of the PUD. So, um, I like to rezone, that's commercial. But he felt there would be no objections to it based on its location. We will have services, your water, sewer available, electric's there, and concurrency is not an issue for traffic. So he felt like that, that they could support that, movement of that, uh, moving forward. Of course, the design of architecture would look and feel like Sou- Summer Camp's style. So you wouldn't be your typical convenience store, it would look more like a, an old-timey baked fish shop.
And then the RV community, did you...
We did. So we, uh, um, so again, the thought process is not to turn into a standard, what you see, atypical RV community. But is to utilize the lots that originally designed, go ahead and flat those lots, get an overlay of some form to allow us to be able to, instead of building on those lots right away, that people could buy those lots and then they could have people come and park their RVs and utilize our services, the, the restaurant, the pool, access to the beach, the boat ramp, all those facilities together so that, uh, they can benefit. And then eventually they can decide that they want to buy a lot, or they can build on, if they bought that lot, they could build a house there.
We have an RV community in Caribou that's operating like that right now.
Okay. And the goal was also to, to shield it. So we would have buffers back from the 98. Uh, again, it, eventually will be a subdivision, so, or part of our subdivision. So we don't want it to be, you know, right there, um, and everyone's using.
So, and that's this area on the north side, right?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am, that is correct. It was right there on the...
So that is, that is separated from the rest of your...
Correct.
Subdivisions, your communities. So they would have their own, uh, place. Now, would this have to be, is there a homeowners association there?
Yes, actually, they're, I'm the president of the HOA.
Okay.
So that would be, it still has to be approved by our HOA. Uh, as part of that, they would, uh, individual lot owners would pay their dues just like they would anybody else. And they would be bound by the, the government's restrictions that apply towards any homeowner or tenant renting a home.
Let's see, I'm trying to think. And, and you discussed within the, uh, potential or your, your projections to build a, a small hotel, hotel area?
Yeah, actually, that's part of a PUD where I, we're allowed it to 50 units. Uh, again, the hotel starting out would be a 10-unit hotel, that's our goal. Uh, we actually then would like to grow it and do some individual bedroom on stilts. Uh, and actually, I, my goal would be is to, to get the core engineers and the county to allow us to actually put some over the water. Um, again, the goal is to make this as unique a place as possible. And, you know, if people want to be outside, it's a beautiful place, uh, there's a lot of nature there, the birds, the fishing, the, the, just the ecotourism itself. The goal is, let's make this place so unique where people go, I want to be there. And remember, the motel's been a part of it before. So, and, uh, and again, the hotel would have the same look and architectural feel. So again, it's not this, you know, nothing against any of the name brand hotels out there, but this would not be that look.
Uh, does anyone in the, uh, audience have questions? Well, Charlie would, I mean, do you have questions, sir?
Uh, no, I don't have any right now.
Okay. And how about Russell, Kyle?
Okay, so the, the complete, um, uh, build-out of, of the property would include 499 residential units?
Correct.
Uh, 50-unit hotel?
I'm going to grab the...
Okay.
So per the PUD, we're allowed 499 dwelling units, 35,000 square feet of non-residential land use. There is the, up to 50-unit hotel, public safety facility, and auxiliary non-resident dwellings such as gatehouse, storage facilities, and mega facilities.
Okay. And so the, the commercial area you mentioned and the grocery, that is not part of the PUD?
That is correct.
So that would be above that?
Yeah, that's separate from the PUD. And so that's, and as I said, it's outside, so we would have to do a rezoning and then do a site plan as part of that.
Okay. So I'm just curious, 10,000 square feet and roughly?
Yeah, probably. I mean, typical, yes, eight to 10. Um, and then of course, we'd have some bathrooms over at, uh, where we do our, uh, both our research, where people there to have clean outs and stuff of that sort.
Oh, that's a good question. The, the RV storage is also not part of the PUD?
That's correct, not a part of the PUD.
Did you, uh, did you speak to them about, uh, the, Mr. Currington, about the boat and RV storage location?
Yes, and he was supportive of that. As, as we designed that commercial component there, uh, we would do is, is, because again, the goal is, is that would be HOA, for, you know, homeowners who live in area, uh, will come down to visit and not open to the public. And so we would, even though it's kind of a commercials zoning designation, we would actually restrict it, uh, moving forward so that something happened later on, if, you know, we're not, someone's not going to go in there and just go straight.
And your boat ramp, then, that will be just for your, for your community?
Correct. Right now, the goal is that it would just be for the community. We'll, you know, again, as the community builds out, we would see there's opportunities for us to tie in and provide some partnerships with local other businesses in the areas who could actually join venture on some other things.
One more question. Do you, uh, have, have you gone so far as having a praiser consider what your absorption rate would be? You know, how many, how many units you may sell a year? I'm just curious if...
So I've done a, I've done a feasible analysis. Right now, we're looking to try to bring on 10 to 20 this year. And then the goal would be to move that forward. Um, and then it can taper down to five a year, but, you know, it could also taper up to 30 a year, depending on the market share. Um, again, the goal is to design homes in the community that are marketable. And, um, you know, what we have to, I keep telling myself every day is, this is not 38. This is, you know, the garden, you know, ghosted. It, it's got its own feel and vibe and, and there's a, you know, the, the market share who wants that is there. They just want to buy affordable and, you know, home sites and, and houses.
Well, I, I need some guidance on to, as to where we go from here. You have an idea, Mr. Lord?
I'm just, just kind of shooting from the hip today, if, if it pleases the board. Just, just considering some, some options, I've jotted them down here and listened to the discussion. Uh, seems like to me the options would be, uh, one, one option would be connect directly to City Caribou's system, whether it's water, sewer, one or both, uh, as a bulk customer. And that would bring into question the maintenance then of the collection system, uh, would be responsible for that. Uh, second, the second option would be a complete takeover of the system by Caribou. And, uh, that system could be run independent of Caribou's primary water sewer system. In other words, there's a, there's a well and water system here on site. There's a, uh, a wastewater treatment plant on site that could be operated where it is. And thirdly, a, a, a complete takeover of the system by Caribou, uh, that, that would connect back to Caribou's primary system. That is kind of the three, uh, options that, that I, that I just jotted down while we were talking. And then Dan, while, while we're sitting here, Dan pulled up the annual report for, from the Department of Service Commission. And, and I mean, as you can imagine, with 21 homes, the revenue is not stellar by any stretch. It's not good. Uh, so they're, you know, they're, they're posting a loss with, with 21 homes in there, as you would expect. So, you know, at, at some point, it, it would, it would show, uh, a profit. And I, I don't know what, at what point that would be, but, um, that's kind of what I was making.
Yeah. I, I think it, um, that may play into an option where the, the takeover could be phased in some way.
And that's kind of what I'd think. Because again, nothing has to happen every night. The goal is a long-term plan. You know, again, working together to find out what's the best plan, the best time. As we've built out and, and y'all expanded, and so we've kind of come together to that single point where it's the right time and we've planned it. And so now we transition, we transition parts here, part there, and then ultimately there's a, a complete takeover. But it's done with a plan in place that everyone agrees to, that's based on time and money.
And I had thought of, uh, certainly, uh, in phases, or the first step would be, and we all would know what the first step would be, that's your western side to hook up with our most eastern terminal.
And that's why I wanted Matt America to bring on that parcel A. Because again, it's that direct connection, it's the closest link. And it makes sense to transition from parcel D to parcel A as well as the commercial center. And also picks up the FSU community. Which is very, very supportive. We've been out there, sat down with them, they're, they're ready to be done with what they have. And I've also met with FSU facilities in Tallahassee, uh, twice now to discuss how they're planning to do this.
And certainly, we all know that there's not a, a profit here for Caribou either at this point. Even, even if all of the connection expenses were covered, there's still not a profit because there's just not that many. You have 21 homes, but they're, they're spread out between your east side and west side. They're not all on the west side even in 21 homes.
And one of the things that...
My count's right, there's 16 on the west end.
That is correct. Actually, there's two in the construction. So, and they're going to need to build six more on the west side. But one of the things I've talked with, uh, to reach out to the homeowners who do own lots on the west side, is they've been wanting to see some momentum, they want to see some activity, they want to see what the plan is. And so now that we're trying to put a plan in place, the, the boat ramp and all these other things, they're more inclined to want to build a home or a lot. And there's some of them since 2004, 2003. And so, um, the, the, the time is, is now to start moving forward. And activity breeds activity.
And so basically, everything that you have been, um, west of the FSU lab and, and the FSU lab... And so, basically, everything that you have been west of the F S U lab, and the, and the F S U lab would all, is all connected now?
It would be.
To, to lift stations. On the other, the other, the east of the F S U lab, that is headed up to your sewer plant on the north?
The, the parts that are planted, right now are tied into one single lift station, which then grab, or then forcing fees to our sewer plant.
The horseshoe area, where, where is that, do you have that tied into this?
It would be tied into, yes, because of its proximity to F S U, a short extension to that location would be cost effective.
Okay, so it's not there now?
No, no, but that, that would be, so that would be my next phase of development. And again, the goal would be as we move farther to the east, and that's why I say we come up with a plan that legitimately works is, we take down different parcels, we start adding on to the, the overall system, and come with, again, looking at the cost and time. And then ultimately, we could still always pump the east side lift station until a point that it gets ready to tie in and be transferred over. Nothing precludes us from continuing to do that, and that cost is not one compared to the other two sides.
Commissioner Allen, did you have a question?
I just have a comment, any kind of investment like this is, you know, it takes a while to get a return on the investment. But, you know, I keep thinking nineteen, twenty, twenty years from now, what will it be? And, you know, we can't stop growth, I'd love to build a wall around Franklin County.
I won't take it down.
But, but that's not a reality, because we're going to have immigrants in our community. And I love Carebell for what it is, and one of the parties, it's old Florida. And I hope that in all the plans that we do, we can keep that atmosphere and let it still be a unique part of Florida. I'd hate to see it become a megaphone.
No, sir, I will say, my goal is that using the architecture and the style and the community there and the way it's laid out, the goal is to continue that, so that again, fifteen years from now, people drive by there and go, they did it right.
Right now, we're going west to Lighthouse Estates, and then, but, but that's really what the Florida Land Management asks us to do, is to, to be a regional processor. As Charlie, how's our capacity now, do we have a lot of room for more?
Well, we're approaching half capacity, we still have a lot of, a long way to go.
And that would have to be expanded more in our area, wouldn't it, later, to do this?
It would take a long time, but yeah.
Yeah, eventually.
Yeah.
But this is, even though there's no profit to be made for, for the water sewer system today, this is an investment in the future, is what we're, we're thinking about.
That's the point, yeah, anybody opens up a business, don't expect to make a profit for four, five years.
That's a good tactic, actually, for a lot.
It would be the best if we could just figure out a way to break even, to pay for the maintenance, operations, staff, that, that type thing, just some way, just to break even, so that it doesn't affect our other ratepayers. You know, we, you may have read what's going on in our sister city here, and we had to raise our rates a few years ago, and it was, so we had to be very gentle about it, if he let us tear it up over three years, but, you know, we'll have to raise rates again, but we don't necessarily want to have to do it to fund something where there's no income coming in.
Well, and now's not a bad time for us to actually sit down and have that conversation as we start moving forward with more development. Do we need to put a plan and to raise our rates over the next five, ten years, and how do we do it incrementally? So that, again, the existing homeowners who there aren't being overly burdened, but as new people come on, that they can absorb some of that expense long term. So, I, I'm all for working again with your staff and just call it solutions.
But I believe that they're on, on city water and sewer, anyone that's on city water and sewer have to have the standard rates that we offer, is that correct?
No, we can charge an outside city rate, but it is statutorily capped.
But we do charge an outside.
Yeah, we have an inside and outside.
And, and also, depending on this, there are, if we classify it as a different class of service, we can charge a different rate.
Kind of like St. James Bay.
But we need a finding in order to establish that new class of service.
I don't have anything other than what I've already, I just repeat myself saying that I'm in favor of, of going forward with the discussions, and I'll say the same thing that I said at the last meeting. I'm, I'm not excited, and, and I don't think I would support, feel positive I wouldn't support burdening the citizens of Carebell with anything that we do outside. Now, I'm highly in favor of expanding and growing, as long as we're not burdening city of Carebell residents to pay for somebody else's water and sewer, or whatever it may be. But I'm very open to moving forward with discussions and seeing where we can go with this, I'm, I'm very interested, that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
And I am too, and we want to make sure that we're not going to burden all of our ratepayers, in and out of the city of Carebell.
Good point.
So, the initial project would be to connect the pilots, pilot line?
As far as bringing on phase A, parcel A, yeah, that would be my thoughts, if we did that, because then it would actually, there would be people connecting with lot sales and homes being built, that's part of that, that's then again, makes connection fees and actually brings on use. So, it's more than just putting a pipe in that sense, and as I said, it's all about timing. Because again, one way or another, we're going to spend some money, the question is how do we maximize the use of that funds?
So, then, do we need to have another meeting, do we need to have engineers meet engineers, or, you know, I?
That's what I would think, the engineers need to get together, get their heads together and bring it back to us.
Give us some information on the specifications and, and the facilities that are, that they have, and the capacities and the permitting and.
Cost, I think cost is going to be the big.
And time.
And time, I agree, but cost is going to be tied directly with that time.
That is correct.
And cost is going to include all those specifics as far as operation, infrastructure, right from A to Z.
Correct.
Yes.
So, do we, what's entertain a motion to set the engineer in place to do something like an analysis, a cost analysis?
I would make a motion to that effect.
Okay.
I would say.
All right, so we have a motion back, Commissioner Allen, to approve the engineer to conduct a cost analysis on, on, let me, can I ask you, but he's already, on, on phase one, on the phase one, the eastern side? Is that, is that all right, does he need to, Mr. Hartman amend his motion?
I'm sorry, the motion was to have, have Russell do a cost, basically a financial analysis on it, and turn out a menu to separate this into two pieces, as far as the west and east end? I, I would, I would, I mean, that to me would be part of his, I, I think, I mean, again, my, my thoughts, as you, Russell and I were whispering back and forth, is that it would have to be phased, and that would include both, both pieces, but the financial analysis, to me, would stretch out over time, because you're basically, St. James Utility Company's operating in the hole, and has been since day one up to this point. So, digging, you know, the extent to which we take over, and the extent to which that, you know, who's bearing that, that deficit and for how long. And that's the model that Russell needs to build. And when he builds that model, in theory, with assumptions being made based on, Socrates has talked to us about here as far as development coming online, that literally will show you when it breaks past above water and it starts to make, you know.
Break even point.
Break even point, and, you know, everybody then takes everything with a grain of salt, knowing what we've already been through on projections of growth that were gangbusters in oh six, oh seven, and flat through twenty twenty, twenty thirty, and twenty ten.
So, then, we have this motion by Commissioner Allen, and to direct Russell large to move forward with a cost analysis on this, on this potential project, and seconded by Commissioner Mathis, is there further discussion?
Just a quick question to Russell, and I know he can't answer me specifically, but are we looking at a large cost?
I may, I may need to, I may need to get back with you.
I figured you would, I'm not trying to hold you down to a specific dollar.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. If, if you don't mind, I'd, I'd like to get back with you.
Okay.
All right, so we're still in discussion, would, would we prefer Russell to bring us a task order?
Yes, sorry, I was.
All right, so we have this motion, but it seems like we might prefer a task order, so we would, then I would recommend that we don't approve this motion, and then that we entertain another motion for Russell to bring us a task order on what it would cost to do a cost analysis.
We have a meeting next Thursday, so is a task order?
Sure.
Okay, so we could answer Mr. Commissioner Allen's motion next Thursday.
So, we would, we would need to vote, as, as we, unfortunately, we would oppose this one. And then, and then we would entertain a motion to have Russell with the novia bring us a task order at our March seventh meeting. I, I don't, even though it would be necessary for a motion for a task order, because you're going to approve or deny the task order anyway in March, that he prepares. Do we want to vote this one?
Yes, we're going to, I'm going to call for a vote on this one. All those in favor, all those opposed, aye, and any, so that, that doesn't carry. But I think I would, I would prefer a motion for a task order.
Make a motion, we ask Russell for a task order to be presented at our regular meeting next Thursday night?
Second.
For this summer camp proposal project.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Millander requesting Russell to bring us a task order on performing a cost analysis, and then seconded by Commissioner Allen, is there any further discussion? All in favor, aye, any opposed, okay, and then that motion carries. And thank you all, we wanted to, to make sure we do it right, we have to move one gentle step at a time. So, is there anything else here we would like to discuss with Mr. Curtis while he's with us, and Sean?
Shane.
Shane? Charlie?
That's a very important habitat area for fish, so I've been told by the people from over at the marine lab that ninety percent of the gag grouper in the Gulf of Mexico are born right in that bay area.
Really?
Yeah.
That is interesting.
That's for all over the Gulf.
Wow, I, I would say this, we've met several times about the Schumering Lab, Dr. Coleman and her staff, and they are very supportive of us moving forward with this project. And as I said, my goal is to build it the right way, and again, taking, you know, that's why we moved the boat ramp over to the west side, so it does not impact any of the things that they do in there, at the facility there. And again, so they're supporting us on working together on all this venture right, what we're taking.
Well, I actually look forward to the progress of it anyway.
I do too, I'm excited about it.
Madam Mayor, thank you, and Mr. for inviting me today to speak with y'all. I will attend next Thursday night, I'll get the information, and I'll also work with your consultant to make sure that he has any information he needs from us.
Okay, thank you, thank you both for coming, we appreciate you taking your afternoon off to be here with us.
Y'all have a great day, thank you so much.
Okay, bye-bye, and then, do we, hello, Mr. Bo, do we want to take a recess?
Yes.
Okay. We've been, well, an hour, we've been an hour and a half. Okay, let's go talk about our next meeting here, at our special meeting on February twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. Item number two, discussion and possible action regarding outstanding issues at the new city hall building here at twelve oh six Highway ninety-eight. I like that, I like to say that, I think of that by now.
Really?
Yeah, okay. I have a list, I hope the staff has a list, and some other folks have some things they might need to discuss. But number one, I want y'all to please speak into your microphones, we had originally talked about a Bluetooth system, ten thousand dollars, somewhere around in there, and we just decided we better stop spending for now, maybe in a couple of years. So, we're working with our old system, and it's good, seems like it's doing pretty good. During our commission meeting last month, though, Tisha and I did notice that people were cutting their ears, in your online? Let's see here. Okay. All right. And then I, I just wanted to bring to your attention, you see the temporary sign is over there that was outside, and we're, Courtney and I are discussing having a frame put around that, and now the side that you're looking at shows some rust and a couple of scratches, that's the bad side, the other side is, is looking real good. Framing that and putting it up back here, so I, I just wanted to, you know, kind of run that past you, that's, we don't have a city seal or anything, and that could be there temporary for, you know, a few years until, until we get a city seal. We'll put it back here on this wall.
How about building a frame for it?
Yeah, Greg has graciously offered to volunteer and build a frame and paint it the same color as the outside of the building. And you may put some decorative rope on it, I don't know. But anyway, that's, that's the tentative plans for that sign, that's why she sits in here. I, I wanted to ask our, the vinyl, we have, you know, some good vinyl floors, and we want to keep those in, in, in our windows, and like new condition as long as we can, are they on a routine schedule for good regular mopping? No?
And then Miss Barbara's cleaning on every day, but I don't have anything for anyone to help you in.
Okay, and the windows too, interior and exterior, so that's something that, you know, we should consider to, you know, for keeping the building maintained, I think. And I, I noticed, I was in the police department today, and they really need a, an inside carpet door mat over there, kind of like the one they had outside the door, but inside there, they, they do a lot of in and out over that way.
Inside, like inside their door?
Yeah, they've got one on the outside, something like that, chief?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
The upholstery and all of our chairs, except those two are new right there, was cleaned, y'all all know that. Some folks thought our chairs back here were brand new, but the frames need to be cleaned on them, you know, to, to really bring them back or, or make them like new. And we'd have to hire somebody to do that, I guess, I don't know who, but it would be nice if they were thoroughly cleaned. Then I wanted to ask our, the heat and air thermostats, are they, can they be adjusted by Wi-Fi access somehow?
They can.
Uh-huh, do all staff members have access to that? Okay, all right, I just, you know, I just don't, or, or can that be done from home, can you, can you do that from home?
They, I mean, they can set up that way.
Uh-huh, just curious, and so who, who has access to manage the thermostats right now?
I have it set up, I can put it on my cell phone, but I don't have it set up, so it's just in the building.
Okay.
Now, the one thermostats in my office, and the one is in that hallway here, you know, I believe there's this one here, and I don't, scared you have it on?
Yeah, I got it on.
Okay, all right.
So we haven't even programmed them or set them? So we haven't even programmed them, programmed them or set them on a schedule or?
Okay, well, probably when you get a chance, program them so they won't be heating and air during the, during the night so much.
I had that hallway programmed. I'm glad I come home today and I, but I haven't, but it's this one I don't think it comes home with.
All right, and, and like they're off at night, on Sundays, Saturdays, Sundays, okay.
Let me ask a question.
Okay.
Program them to go off on the weekends. Building cools down or heats up, whichever way it, someone went. To turn them back on, don't they have to work harder to get it back than if it would if you kept it a constant? Because all the furniture, the walls everywhere stays at a constant.
Now, furniture, yeah, you're right. The furniture will get hot. Maybe they could turn them down where they weren't instead of cooling at seventy-three on the weekends or seventy-two. It cooled to seventy-eight or something like that.
Right, because we tried it at, at our house and it's cheaper to set them and leave them alone.
Let it stay steady.
Let it stay a constant, you know, heat or cool, whichever you're doing.
All right. I wanted to ask, is everyone satisfied with the setup of the, the chamber in here?
That podium's too high.
Too high?
I mean, seriously, I'm, I'm a short person, but I've even had members of the audience already comment that we're here at our first meeting that they can't see a lot of us up here because that podium's high.
Is this same height as the other one? Okay.
I can't see anybody in that audience right there because, and you made that comment earlier that you used to experience that from the old place about it being in the center.
When it's in the middle, you can't, I couldn't see anybody. I, I really.
Move it over to the side.
Oh, the side there with the chair, huh?
And that being the bigger.
Big old box and have the, the dais.
That's, that's what I was surprised that didn't happen.
What is it?
That the dais doesn't sit up.
I didn't even think of that.
That would be expensive to do that extremely.
Yeah, it's elevated and it's counted.
This, this was eleven thousand dollars like this if we wanted to build it. Then you'd have to have handicap access, you know, elevates from the front.
Right.
Um, maybe a?
Um, what about the handicap parking for some of us?
We have a handicap parking.
No, I meant in here. When Mr. Board came in here.
We said the whole for a row out for the handicap parking.
Close out, it just didn't.
And the back one right there. And, and we've got one space in the back as well.
Could we maybe pull it out and see if that, I think that.
I had a, I had, I had a thought about the podium.
Uh huh.
Just don't share it. Like, go ahead and get it.
I, I had a thought, maybe one that's a little leggy, you know, that you can see through it a little better than one that's solid.
Or either lower that one.
Or put it on wheels and we can push it to the side and smooth it back. Try that.
Much better.
Oh, it's a lot cheaper. Yeah. You're gonna charge for that, Greg?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's eyeballing it off because I seen Mary.
And now I, I received a complaint that folks sitting on this side couldn't see through the high back chairs.
Okay, I can.
You don't have superman.
I can move.
Can't even tell from here.
One, one person complained that they didn't like it. He, he didn't like it because he couldn't see the attorney's face, but I'm telling you, I really like it.
That was why we had it this way so that the public won't be seeing his face.
Yeah, I, I like it. I like to see them talking to me. I, I like that. There, you know, he's here to, to, the attorney and, and the engineer, they're here to guide us and consult us and, and, you know, it's, it's it's almost like we're in board table, actually.
And the other people are looking up through there and wondering why that chair there is moving and don't see anybody.
We love you.
Okay, so here's something more serious. Sound is traveling from one office to the other. I'm sure we've experienced, I know staff has experienced it and the chief as well. And we have, we're thinking about a solution to put some type of insulation, possibly something called rock wool over. We want to start, my suggestion would be to start with the police department first because they, they really need their privacy over there in their discussions. And it's called rock wool, if you're Googling that. It's fire resistant and sound resistant. And to put it over those offices on the outside wall over there in the police department and the lobby area first and, and try that out and see how it works. And if it works, then I would suggest to get these outside offices of staff and along the wall and, and over here as well. And see how that works before we try to do the, the hallways and, and this room. That may be enough, but we may have to wait till next budget season to do that side of the building, but I think we need to go ahead and, and get a quote for the police department. Needs to be professionally installed and put something in there, some type of insulation, soundproof insulation over their offices in the lobby.
Well, my thoughts on it, maybe that's the way to go, but I would first inquire with the the, the builder and see if that's the way we need to go. I experienced it personally with the construction of forestry's office. And I mentioned it in the process of this office being built, but it didn't happen, but that's okay. We took the three administrative people, or I did, in that office over there and you can almost shoot a pistol off in their offices when the doors closed. But they built it that way. And they built the three supervisors' offices that way. Privacy needs to be, her office needs to be really private. Police department I agree with, Gary's particular, and hers needs to be that way. Courtney or the city administrator. But solid core doors and the soundproofing insulation, those over there, you can shut the door and you don't hear through. And I don't know what those are, but what I'd do, I'd suggest that we talk to the builder and get his idea on that. Russell, do you have any input?
Yeah, yes, I do. And briefly mentioned this to the architect. I think if you have a product in mind, maybe the appropriate thing to do there is to have the architect review the product and give you an opinion by letter. You know, that that's an appropriate application, you know. I, I think fire would be a concern. And we certainly want to make sure that they were not violating the building code issues. So to have him weigh in on that, the architect and/or the builder. I, I think, I think that would, would be important.
And the solid core door?
Yes.
Those are hollow core doors and you can hear anything through our offices over there. That was part of the soundproofing. They had to be a solid core door.
Yes, sir.
And another thing about those doors, that, they don't even fit the door down good. One of our doors in Amber's office, when it's closed, you can actually see the light of the window through it, standing in the hallway.
That's, that's the contractor. Now, should we have Sperry come in and look at that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We'll get the contractor to, to look at that. That should be under warranty.
Agreed.
Solid core doors are gonna be.
Expensive.
Yeah.
And we don't need them in every room in our office. There's just a, a few. That's really important.
Now, that's my opinion. We don't need them in every office.
Right, and our break room, we don't need solid core doors on the back break room.
Now, all the, all the walls, even the walls in here, we were told it was soundproof insulation is what the architect said, it was soundproof insulation. But every wall, every interior wall has insulation on it, in it, on it. So, but, so.
But, but the ceilings?
Does not, no. So rock wool is something that I've looked at. And if maybe if he has something similar that's fire retardant, the sound retardant, or something that's more soundproof than rock wool. And do, does, does he think that it would be sufficient just to do the offices, you know, as a cost saver?
Right, right. I'll be happy to make that inquiry.
Okay, probably then we start with three doors for the chief and Amber and Courtney.
I'd recommend, I do, I noticed that I mentioned to Courtney is the exterior door next to the water department, I mean, coming in for the public. As far as just from a security perspective, that's a hollow core door too. Seems very clumsy. You'd almost want the, the entrance coming back to the city folks, not from a noise standpoint, but just from a, having a real door. There might be a good idea.
Well, we need to have less than two. I mean, we can get quotes, but it's, I mean, if you.
I mean, a solid core door, I would think. I mean, I, I like those ones.
I know.
Hundred dollars more.
Now, is that gonna be the, the, the jam and everything, or are you just gonna try to replace the slab?
Now, the ones on ours over there, again, going back to the ones I did over there for soundproofing, those are jams and everything. You cannot see through them, under them or around them. When you close them, they're sealed.
If you did the jam too, you could insulate between the stud and the, and the jam. That might help too, if you were gonna do the whole thing.
But that's what we're doing now than after.
Yeah, I don't know. Just a slab.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Russell, Russell, he knows better than you.
I, I do, I do. So three, three doors is one of her, chief, Amber and Courtney.
Uh huh, to begin with.
And the second door in our lobby going in, maybe that door needs to be a little more secure than.
Well, we need, yeah, and we do, we need to get a price though and really see, you know, what it's gonna be.
The police department lobby door?
I guess. I mean, you can't, yeah. I mean, once we, once we learn, we need to get a price on all of that.
And there may, there may be more labor involved than just the slab because you gotta chisel out all the hinges and the, you know.
It might be about the same either way.
So if we're looking at changing Amber's door, then we really, we wouldn't need the contractor to come out and rework it, make it right, the door that's hanging there.
True. Okay.
Okay, is that, is that enough on sound?
I think it is because I think it's gonna be expensive. Yeah, I would say.
I mean, just to look and kind of get a price, get a price on rock wool, see, or whatever it is the architect suggests. And see what it's gonna cost to, to do the police department offices. It's not bad. Maybe we'll get Courtney's right away at the same time. Landscaping. Now Courtney said Ms. Barbara's gonna.
She's gonna keep up what's right here in the front on ninety-eight. I mean, I'm sure if we decide to put, move the other stuff around the building, that's true. I mean, she already did that over there. She's gonna.
So Courtney and I talked about some, some muley plants were destroyed out here during construction, so you're gonna try to find some from somewhere along the way and maybe the streets and roads right guys can place those and then Ms. Ms. Barbara's gonna keep this lot weeded?
Just pick the trash up and weed it.
Okay.
I mean, when it gets needed, needs cut, she can let me know. I'll, I'll come in. We'll be able to see it now from here.
And then we have talked many times and Keisha has talked many times. She wants to bring the plants over. And, and that's fine with me. I think it's a good idea, but we kind of, we, we need a little design, don't you think? And bring those sad bombs and bring those over here somewhere, even if they go on the side or around in the back because they're, you don't have as much space, you know. But I think we could take them and, and make something nice over here. Would we have to have that professionally done, moved? I don't know. I don't know what to say about that. We know we, we want it to survive. And then we have to have a monument for Ms. Pat Bragdon. We kind of looked at a couple of little monuments, just looking at them online. We need a location for that. That's in our contract with her that we have a little, you know, some type of a monument that denotes her, her generous donation. And do we have any idea of where we might like to put that underground?
I just think it should be on the front somewhere. Where on the front? I don't know. I don't have an idea of somewhere awards out front.
Well, you've got either sides.
Yeah, exactly.
But, and we've got quite a few items over here. I don't know if they're taking the fire hydrant out yet or not. It's going away. Could be on this side or over here. The police department has requested to, do you still want to do your car washing as you kind of, you mentioned to me briefly?
We need some, someplace to be able to do it back here like we talked about.
Okay, he, they want to do their car washing over the inlet box area right back here. And then he, he talked about taking the other side of this, this covered area and closing it up all the way and having a little storage area to keep all of their car washing utensils in. How does that seem to you all? Will y'all roll up your hose and pick your mops up and buckets and everything?
No, absolutely.
Are you sure? Do we have to?
If they don't, we'll come by and pick them up and carry them home.
Yes.
Well, that's, that's the reason for having them closed in and a place to keep them.
Well, that's kind of a, so we're living by living on eyes. Yeah, closing in makes it look better.
Well, I think it was, it's, it's much more attractive than what it looks. I think Donovan's got it closed in there pretty decent. I mean, it, it, it sticks out, but it, it's not as bad as it looks.
Can they, can they move forward with that? Moving their car washing station? Are you just gonna put a couple more fence panels?
That's what we had talked about, just something. I mean, like riding by on the highway, like you said, you mean, you see that generator and everything. If it was completely closed in and we kept our buckets and our brushes and, and just stuff there that we wash cars with.
Just as long as they can get to it and service it. Yeah, not, not trying, uh, one log, you could put a piece of pegboard, four by eight pegboard, put these little hooks and hang some stuff up on there. Is that all right?
Gonna move the garbage can back there too?
It stays right there. During the week, it just gets pulled out on Monday.
Okay.
It usually stays right here at this back door. So she's taking trash out. Now, we need, I believe we need a gutter system as well. Need to start over here because the sidewalks are already getting slippery. Water is dripping off, moisture is dripping off here. And I think for our next budget workshop, we should by then have some quotes on a seamless gutter system and, and see what that, that will run us to do. Have you all noticed the water dripping on its side?
And back here too.
I haven't noticed it back here.
Cause it doesn't get as much sun, so it doesn't really dry.
And it's, it's on the front side as well, on this north side. Parking, I beg your pardon?
You said the front side, the north side?
The north side.
That's the east side.
I know that, but the north side of the little portico that's out there?
Gotcha.
Where the bicycle is, the north side of that, where the bicycle rack is. And then parking, staff is doing a great job with parking in north parking lot, we thank y'all very much, you're doing good. Now, the commission needs to do the same. I think, the commission overall, it seems like they're parking out there, but, you know, we wanna try to, I would suggest to save this front area for our visitors. On Sonatral, you've communicated with them a little bit about the window damage.
Since I don't have a quote, I really don't have anything to tell them. So, I mean, they know the windows have been damaged due to the installation. You were here when the guy was out here doing the rest of the install, and he looked at it and acknowledged that they, they damaged the windows, but don't have anything to signal as far as a bill or a quote, or this is how much it's gonna cost, because we haven't been able to get the window guys to get anything. So, we've, I know that we've discussed having Dan send a letter, that says that they're responsible for it, but I don't, I don't have any other information.
And, and you tried to get in touch with the people in Mexico, not Marianna?
Russell sent an email just a few days ago.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, last week, the people that installed the windows and the doors, it's the same company, they show up here, they say, we're here to look at your door, we, we had a report that something's wrong with your door, there's nothing wrong with the door, but something's wrong with the windows. So, they looked at all the windows and said they'd get back with me. So, I just haven't had any luck getting anything.
Well, I'm concerned about waiting too long, that they'll think that, you know, they may, they say, may say, there may be a problem if we wait too long to try to have the windows repaired and have, have Sonatral reimburse for that.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a valid concern. I, I can't explain why they're not providing the quotes, they asked and asked, and called, emailed, and-
Could the job be too small?
Um, maybe, I, 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 I don't know, I, I, I don't know what the issue is, I can, I can understand the folks in, in both locations, being busy replacing windows from, as a result of the storm, but I think we've been on their list for a while. Tommy's in Panama City, and then Tommy's Auto Glass in Marianna, those are not related businesses, but tho- those are the two companies.
Do you think we should look for someone else?
Definitely, at, at, at this point, for, for sure, I mean, this needs to be resolved.
Would you, Russell, my question is, is would you have a glass company replace those, or would you replace the panels? I've had a little bit of experience personally with those windows and the, and the gas and the central, and you don't have to replace the entire window, you just replace the panel, which I'm sure you know.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, and that's what the quote we asked for, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're, we're talking about, the bottom panel.
Panel, for real.
And that's why I thought maybe the job was too small.
Well, I know one lady, to follow up on what Russell said, that she has had windows ordered for her house since Michael, right after Michael, they came in Thursday of last week. Anyway, and-
So, almost cool enough.
You know, and people behind, but at least we could get something in writing, if that's the case, at least we could get something in writing, a committee to get the job done.
Right, or, or just a price?
Yeah.
Just a price.
And also, could, could Dan or Russell write to Sonatral and tell them that these ten windows and, and the windows, the location and the room numbers that they're in, these ten windows were damaged during the security installation, and you are diligently working to get a quote to replace the, the panels, the ten window panels, to replace those panels, and that you will be eventually submitting for reimbursement on that damage, so that they're, Sonatral's pre-worn, that they're, we're not just silent, and then all of a sudden, a year later, they get a, you know, a, a request for reimbursement.
What I'd just recommend, I know-
I'll do this.
Is Courtney send the, the initial that letter, let's get the quote, and then you can decide whether it's Courtney letter or a lawyer letter saying, now we've got our quote, we're proceeding with the work, we expect you to pay for it, and-
And, and on that note, we are withholding the Sonatral payment too, we did not send any.
Okay, they're, okay, they're paying it for-
It's charged.
Okay. Maybe they'll call you then. That's usually the easiest way to get ahold of them, yes.
Yeah, boy.
All right, um, okay, that's all I have. You all have anything? Do you have anything, yes sir?
I do, just, just a, just a thingy. We, we're waiting on the Asbilt survey, which we, we have requested several occasions, most recently on February the twelfth. We need a revised pipe video, the pipe video they sent us was not acceptable, so we've made that request, and then execution of the five-year guarantee. And I believe that the city has executed it, and we forward that to the contractor for the incentive.
Okay.
And as of yesterday, we sent it to the contractor.
All right. Courtney, do, do you have anything?
Well, then we have it whenever.
Okay.
Oh, the, the sheet rock repair?
Yeah, there is a crack down the side of that window, and it is just, just a sheet rock repair, and you just sand it down and repaint it.
But the contractor needs to, to do that right.
Yeah, and they've been notified.
All right, now, when, we have a year warranty, when does that start?
Uh, when the building is accepted, the final payment, so it hasn't started yet.
Okay, I think, would that be when we sign, sign with Centennial Bank? I think that's gonna be the first week of April sometime, is that it, or?
Uh, I, I think it might, it, no, I don't think that's-
Okay.
That's the same, it's not the same.
All right, all right. Ms. Keisha, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay, no, no outstanding items with the building, or something that needs to be addressed? Okay, all right then, we'll move forward to item three. We'll talk about the old building. Discussion of Possible Action Concerning Decommission and Disposition of the Old City Hall Complex. So, this one might be a little more complicated. Now, Courtney just was telling me during the recess that she's had someone talk to her about-
I had a realtor call yesterday, and they, everybody right now's wanting to do affordable housing, so he called and was looking for property that was zoned for multifamily, and we don't have much in the city, you know, very little, and that piece just happens to be adjacent to multifamily, so it could be rezoned. So, he asked me, well, what are you gonna do on the Old City Hall building? And I said, well, we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow and discuss that, and, you know, are you interested in buying it? And he said, well, we, we may be. So, you know, we might could sell the building, I don't, you'd have to put it out and see what kind of offers you get for it, but it is able to be rezoned to that multifamily that people are looking for.
And I, I actually, when you, when you told me that, it reminded me, I've had a real estate agent complain to me very recently, within the month, that we didn't have enough, we had no multifamily.
Almost everything that we have is the sales condos is multifamily. There's a piece beside the health department that's multifamily, and then the property on the corner across, between the coves and adjacent property coming back towards the cemetery. That's all the multifamily in the city.
So, what if we was to go ahead and rezone that and put it out for sale?
It's an option.
So, that, that is an option.
The, I do some work in that area, just as an attorney, and the federal housing credit stuff that's going on now, they're giving a preference to areas impacted by the hurricane, Hurricane Michael, and they, they literally put all of them in the top tier to be funded right now, and it's, it's, yeah, very active right now. The big, big, the big nationwide companies that are looking to build that stuff are chasing those all, all through the Cola County, all the way through Bay County, right now, so.
And I don't know if that's something that you put up for auction, see what you can get, and versus putting a price on it, you can't, you can sell it for a certain price.
But that's the problem with a lot of these developers, is they can't spot zones, so they can't just pick a piece and say, oh, I'm gonna turn this in multifamily, you have to be contiguous to other zones.
Multifamilies.
That's a favorite thing of theirs, right?
Yeah.
You gotta know spot zone.
But, but you read about what's going on, has been going on for, gosh, eight years over in that much Cola. So, and that is one of those federal tax credit programs that the big, big companies take advantage of, but they pay millions for property when they do those. They're long-term, and they're, you know, they're intended to be for firemen, police and teachers and that sort of thing, of course, they're getting hung up over an Appalachian on it, but it's interesting. And now is, there's a window in time here because of the hurricane to, that, that our area is more attractive for those projects than it's ever been.
And then if, you know, if we don't sell it, or you give rid of the property, we gotta look at how can we secure that property, because right now, people are just going in it, there's no way to secure it. We would have to fence it off or board it up or something.
Well, it, it needs to be secured, no matter what we're, we're gonna do with it, and that, that's, that's on my list, and I've talked with the chief briefly about it. He has discussed, and there's plenty of fencing around there that can be picked, you know, moved, and the inmates could move that fencing.
It needs to be closed around the building.
Right, fence it off in the front, he talked about, the chief described, fence it off in the front, out by the sidewalk, you said, but at the, at the drive area, put a gate there, of course, that needs to be locked and secured, where if you needed to back up to the building to take anything out or deliver, whatever, that can happen, but, and then roll up fences shut over by, on the, on the east side where the nest was, and it's, there's fencing all around the back of the property, the whole property is fenced in, we just couldn't see it because of the pile of dirt that an employee had back there, but now the pile of dirt is gone, and you can see, you can see the fencing. So, the only part is the fencing on the west, or something to secure the building on the west side, Camp Gordon-Johnston, the bay, the bay door of, one of the doors, the back door on the bay I went by on the way over here, is standing wide open right now, and the lights are on in the bay building. I, you know, I don't know, I'm not gonna go in there by itself to see what's going on. The shed in the back that has, I think Riverfront Festival stuff, that door's hanging wide open. All of that needs to be secured, like, immediately, in my opinion, it really does. I mean, we can't, we can't have those buildings just sitting open to the public. The lights are on over there, are they working on the water over there to get the, is the school board going to buy a tap, or how's that working?
We were gonna give, there's a tap there that Camp Gordon-Johnston, they were gonna, they were gonna let them use that.
Okay.
There's a tap in, in the front of the building, that's something we need.
But how, that doesn't go to the, to the gym, how's it gonna get to the gym?
They're gonna have to run it.
Okay.
The school board, not the city.
Right, okay, or, okay. Cause that will run on school board property, under school board property, right, okay.
When we gonna cut the power off that building?
We were wanting to do it by the end of the month, but we've got to get in there and get everything that we need out of it.
Yeah.
And Camp Gordon-Johnston still has stuff in there, even though they've all been notified, but we're turning the power off soon, and we turn it off, it's off-
We need to set a date.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't need to be paying light bill, that was the idea getting over here, building this, it's a light bill, it's outrageous.
And the lights are, are on now.
We just paying, paying money, we don't need to be paying.
And the ones that are on in the building are the emergency lights, most of them, cause we went in and shut them all off.
Okay, but in the bay, the lights are on, in the bay.
I had it being, the bay.
Uh, and so we have the school board, Camp Gordon-Johnston, the Caravel History Museum, do y'all still have stuff over there?
Yes.
Uh-huh. And then the dentist, has he been notified?
He's been notified, everyone's been notified.
He's got everything out there.
Yeah.
Like, he's, his dental chairs are gone. So, we just have the school board, they've been notified?
Been notified several times.
I think Camp Gordon-Johnston, I think they have their stuff out of there, but not out of the bay building, maybe you should ask for a, oh, yes sir, Mr. Melzer.
I think we've got pretty much everything out of the main building.
Okay.
Whatever's left there is, is just obsolete.
Left for the city to clean up.
Well, wherever buys the building, in the bay, we still have the two vehicles out in there, and I think after the parade, I think we have an alternate location for those.
Okay, all right.
But there's some steel cabinets in there, and I, it, it's nothing to value, so, I mean, it-
And I think that's the same way with the whole building, is what's left in there is nobody's paid for. They don't want it. So, I mean, I know you have some stuff in there, but-
Yeah, we've, we're actually trying to consolidate all the things that belong to the history museum into one-ten, where it's on a hallway with lights, because most of our stuff is in a hallway that looks like the inside of a goad.
Because what they had in there is stuff that goes upstairs, and they can't put it back until they're done remodeling the upstairs.
Uh-huh. So, it'd be, the guy's got ninety days from the day of permitting to finish upstairs, but he said we can move some of it back as soon as he gets through with the ductwork and the insulation, so that shouldn't be too much longer, but, you know, it would be un-air-conditioned in a storage room as well, so that's why we're wanting to move it to one-ten, so we could at least have a little ambient light. But we have several display cases that we got from Camp Gordon-Johnston, and we moved it into one-ten with our other things that we had in there, so. You're talking about a room one-ten. There's a room one-ten. Oh, one-ten, okay. And then we also have the room that has the trophies in it, and-
Are you gonna take the trophies, or?
Well, I've been talking to the school board about, there seems to be a desire to acquire a representative number of trophies for a display, a combination between the Appalachian trophies and Caravel trophies, but I explained to them that we already separated them, only thing in there now are the Caravel High School trophies and some yearbooks. And so, if they're gonna do, that's actually one of the things that I was wanting to talk to Commissioner Milner about, and, and those of you that went to high school there, we don't have room to display all of them at the museum, but we were planning on taking a few more for our display, but I, I don't know what a good distrib-, you know, if there's somebody that has, has a reunion on a periodic basis and would like to have more of them. Isn't there one coming up?
Riverfront Festival, there's gonna be one coming up, be a prime time.
Yes, and that way we could, you know, there would be the, the opportunity to say-
Yes.
-what to do with them, and I, I, I just wanna be sure that what I think is happening now is people are kinda wandering around in the building, picking up stuff kind of at random. random.
Is, are, are those rooms air-conditioned?
Well, they, they were when the building was in air-conditioned, but.
Therefore, I'm, I'm asking that, because I didn't think so.
No, no. Those rooms haven't been air-conditioned.
Well, I just heard that mentioned, and I'm asking a question, cause I'm about to make a motion.
No, we, that's, we never thought there'd be air, air conditioning. I didn't know that anything there was air conditioning except up around the front office, so.
Yeah, we, we've got, we've been working on doing, getting rid of the records, room stuff, so we've been working on that.
Okay, so Ms. Tamra, if the, if the power's turned off, you all can still get in there in the daytime if you move this stuff out. Is that correct? That's right, and that, that's our plan was, we anticipated that the power would be turned off at some point. We just wanna be sure we have rounded up all the stuff that we claimed is, we, we moved it in there and we'd like to move it all into one place. And we, we wanna move it back into the museum, just ASAP, but we, we don't wanna rent space if we can avoid it, to put it in. My watch is full.
Okay, I'm ready to make a motion. With all, I'm, I'm, with all considered and discussion we've been having, and, and the point you just made that, that people can get in there in the daytime and get some of those things that are still there that they need to. And everyone that, everyone that's involved has been notified that we're returning the power off. I would make a motion that we go ahead and have the power turned off within the next two weeks.
Second, that motion. Two weeks from today.
Well, what, the reason why I'm saying within the next two weeks, cause Courtney have to call or someone's gonna call and find out when the earliest they can turn it off.
All that, the way still they can get in there and get the records out.
And you need to get your records, so it gives you two weeks, and is that adequate?
How much is Rome Street?
Okay, all right. They've got most of what they can take, without me having to go over there and sit down and go through every box and tell them they can take this. Okay, well, hold, hold. We have a motion by Commissioner Melander to have the power turned off within two weeks. And we have a second by Commissioner Mathis. So let's have more discussion. And, and Commissioner Walden says, is that two weeks from today?
Yeah, I mean, we gotta have a date. So we put the notice out. Is it two weeks from today, or two weeks from Friday?
I think two weeks from today.
I get with two weeks from today.
Sounds good. On the twelfth.
Yes, sir?
Now, you have a lot of stuff in there from, from the move, noticing that the, all the nest stuff and all the other, in all those different rooms, have you thought about like something like a public auction or something to get rid of that stuff? Once you turn the power off, it'll be kinda hard to go in there and figure out, uh, where you're gonna move it to or whatever. Or you just plan to just leave it in there and let it go down with the building? I mean, I, I don't know.
I've thought about it, because I know that there's stickers on both of the buildings that says, we want this, from the history museum, the White House museum, and, and Camp Gordon-Johnston. Everybody's got things in there that they were about to have, but the city's gonna get rid of it. So I don't know that we need to put everything, maybe we need to put all the tables and chairs and everything in one area so they can come and see what's, I don't, not, I don't know.
Cause even if you, even if you.
There's so much in there.
There are services, one of, City of Tallahassee uses one called Public, Public Surplus. And I contacted them and I suggested Courtney to contact for it. You sign up and log on there and you take photos of what you got, and they put it on their site. And I imagine they take a percentage of the cut. And there's another person over in St. Mark's that does the same thing, does online auctions and takes a certain cut of the, and I think it's just ten percent over what the sell price is. So you're not even, you get what they sell for. You may not get a lot for it, but then somebody would have to go in there and photograph and, and send all the different things in. I don't know who'd have the time to do all that, but there's a lot of stuff in that building. And if you shut the lights off too early, you're gonna have a hard time.
Even the desk area just walk down like classrooms. I mean, four classrooms.
And there's a lot of decent, I mean, not that I want it, but there are a lot of decent pieces of furniture and other stuff that are still in the building that, not ours, but.
Recyclers would take the, the computers and the monitors and all that stuff, you know, that kinda stuff.
There's a room full of old, old computers.
Well, I think, I, I'm with you on that. In my motion, I'll go ahead and say this, my motion is based on, on just getting the, the cost of the power cut off. And the way, the way we handle things is if it belonged to the public, it's called government surplus. And yes, you can have an auction, but let's don't sit here today and say we're gonna have an auction, and then next month say again, we're gonna have an auction. If we're gonna have an auction, have an auction. And I'll be willing to withdraw my motion and carry this thing a little bit longer until that process is done, if it gets done. And, but not, next month, say, let's, let's do it again.
I know.
But anyway, that's all I'm trying to do is get the power cut off, where we can save money. That was the goal of getting into this building right here. So whatever needs to be done, let's get it done. And with that in mind, if that's what group wants to go, I'll withdraw my motion.
Well, wait, let's just talk a little bit more.
Okay, go ahead.
And, and I, I'm agreeable with the turning off the power. It needs to be done.
Yeah.
It did, I mean, it needs to be done.
It can be turned off.
If, if we want to, I would suggest to, but I just don't know, I mean, how late it is to gather everything up and put it in the auditorium, cafeteria, cafeteria, you know, is there room for it? You can put it in there and in the chambers. Do we wanna have people come and look at it? I think that would be very time-consuming. Do we want to put it online, like, or have somebody, the public service auction or whatever you just said, come look at it? So, and, and yes, I agree, if we say we're gonna do it, then, then we need to do it. And who, who's, who's gonna do it? Can Courtney do it, or do one of us wanna help with that, or, you know, or does it go down with the building? And of course, there's a lot of people that want a lot of things, and we'll be in trouble if we let the stuff go down with the building, so.
Now, could you, if, does the city own small generators? Do you have any small generators? You could, if you needed to get in the building to do something like that, you could set a generator outside and run a couple of cords in there with some lights and work it that way, too. I mean, if, if you did shut the power off, I'm, just another option.
Is it expensive to have the power? But you can't, you can't mobilize it and organize it if you don't have power. How long would it take the streets and roads, the inmate crews to, to do something like that?
Can you go there and shut off all the breakers, and then when you need the power, you shut them back on?
That's an idea. Then you just pay the base rate?
And you gotta main, just the other main off.
Yeah, I think that's how the main should be, but those emergency lights are gonna stay on.
Even with the breakers off?
But they're batteries.
Yes, yes, Mr. Melander.
Well, there, being over there, there's a lot of rooms that do not have switches and stuff. And if you go in the main breaker and do the main disconnect, at least you can shut off some of that power that's being used. And then if you say two weeks for your shut off, if somebody needed the power in between there, you could turn it back on. But there's a lot of areas that, there is no switches to turn stuff off, and there's a lot of wasted money going down the drain.
Maybe throw, throw all the main switches off and then have streets and roads go around and pull the batteries out of the, out of the.
Let them burn.
Or let them burn out.
They'll, they'll go out after a while.
It's not using power.
Yeah, they would. And then you could just flip it back on when you needed it. And then you're only paying the base rate.
Yeah, the batteries will go out if they're not hooked up and wrecked for recharge.
Right.
And somewhere there's a main that kills everything. I mean, it's where the main's coming into the house, into the building.
Yeah.
Is there a main?
There's gotta be a main breaker somewhere.
In the back, back there, there should be. I thought it was already off. We told them that it's already off. Is that for the bay building as well?
It should have its own.
So that needs to be done for both buildings. And you had your hand raised, Ms. Tamra? Well, I took it back down because you kinda moved past. I was just gonna ask if the Franklin County Yards Sale Facebook page, I don't know who runs that, but that might be somebody that could put stuff. But that, I'm not volunteering to do that. I think we have to auction it though, don't we? We can't just sell it outright.
Keisha, that's where I, that's what I was gonna say. And I said this earlier, it's considered government property. And, and we can't just give it away. If, that's what I was gonna point at Dan and ask him. I don't think we can just give it away or sell it. We've got to go through a process.
Yeah, we'll go through the same process we did with Hexport.
There you go. That's what I thought.
That would be more. Now, we could give it to the nonprofits, couldn't we?
We can give it, we can give it away.
To the nonprofits. So, do we want to make sure all the breakers are turned off? And maybe have this done a little discussion at our next meeting and, and March the seventh to have, have Courtney can report back to us on whether or not our, the breakers are all turned off on both buildings and all the lights are off. And then we could address a motion at that point if need be.
I'll withdraw my motion that I made about turning the power off within two weeks, and we'll address it again at next week's meeting.
Okay.
And see, maybe Courtney can, and y'all can give us an idea of how long it's gonna take us to move some things.
Get it organized for us.
I see you.
Have you been in there?
I, I have, I have, but I haven't paid attention to what all you've got to do.
We'll take a little trip over there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be glad to go with you.
I'll go with you.
And I want you all, I, I really, I wish, and Mr. Mathis is gone now, he needs to withdraw his second. But yes, I have, I think I've been all over. And it's.
I don't know, it's junk, but there are breakers in there.
And you have, you can't just throw it all away. You kinda record that you, this battery's dying.
Now, Mr. Melander did not say that he wanted to have the electric company turn the power off, so technically, his motion isn't.
Well, it was implied.
Okay.
He could, I'll just vote if you don't care. Well, we could just vote to oppose.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, is the discussion finished on this one for now?
I got, please do.
Oh, yes, sir.
In the meantime, while we're waiting, I think that we need to go in there and get some short pieces of chain and secure the inside of those doors. Every one of the doors from the inside.
Okay.
Put a chain around them, a hat, or whatever you gotta do. You ain't gotta necessarily put a lock, but you do it from the inside and then come out that front office door. And that'd be the way you go in and out.
I'll go over there shortly, and whoever else wants to go over and say, we can start doing some of that, be glad to. I know Keith will too.
Make sure that break is cut off.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. So, right now, we're just dealing, we're gonna oppose this motion that you seconded.
You withdrawing yourself?
I withdraw.
Okay, we're withdrawing, alright. So there we go. They've withdrawn, Commissioner Melander's withdrawn his motion, Commissioner, Commissioner Mathis has just withdrawn his second. Alright, so then we're going to work on making sure that the panel, the power's cut off at both buildings and secure the doors from the inside. Are we going to look into moving some fencing? See if they, see if they can move some fencing, or get that secured.
Well, I think we need to look at moving all of the city-owned property that can be sur-, that has to be surplus, is no longer used to an area like the cafeteria, which it doesn't have to have lights on in it, because a few of the doors you can see in there when you're in the daytime. Moving it to that location where we get rid, I see you smiling, maybe I'm wrong. I don't know.
No, we're just thinking that everything in there is all by the city.
Yeah, it's all ours now. Yeah, they've been off and abandoned it to the taxpayers. It's been abandoned to the taxpayers, so.
Anyway, I know, we gotta do something with it.
I know, it's so overwhelming. It is very overwhelming. And the classrooms, the two mobile classrooms, what's happening with that? The soaps?
They sold them.
They're going to the county.
But did they abandon it to the city taxpayers?
I'll inquire. I'll, I'll send one off to the board attorney and find out.
I've heard of remember, but you, that's the best thing to do, is what you just. Find out.
Alright, we, alright, we're directing Mr. Hartman to find out what is going on with those mobile classrooms.
I will.
Okay.
And school bus.
And the school bus.
Yeah.
That's the bus that Commissioner Mathis said we take a road trip in.
Yeah.
Or you would push it over there. Okay, so talking about pushing it over there, they have cleaned their gym out, the bleachers, which was okay, but now most all the bleachers have been pushed over onto city property.
Let's push them back.
Courtney can send me a list of issues and I'll address them.
Simply.
Board attorney.
We got a bucket load, shove them back.
Alright. So then we're talking about, we're gonna possibly consider rezoning to multifamily and offer for sale. We'll kinda talk about that a little bit. You know, I'm just trying to think of something, you know, where we can really get something confirmed down the road here. Or, you know, y'all be thinking about, do you want to keep the building? Do you wanna pay to demo? We've got quotes two or three years ago, two hundred, two fifty, two fifty.
Can we not just let?
I wouldn't rezone it just yet because somebody else might not want multifamily and they're stuck with it.
Get rid of it.
Uh, that's my.
If we sell it for one dollar, right on me.
Well, you know, it's the pleasure of the board. I, I'll do, you know, but I'm, I'm surprised at that because it seems like commissioners don't want to get rid of land, so.
Where we gonna get the two hundred plus thousand dollars and we keep it?
Well, and, and as, as someone has told me, that if we save the two hundred plus thousand, we could buy a lot of land somewhere else with that two hundred we had.
We don't have the two hundred. There's a point.
I know we don't.
And I'll give you my opinion. I've said this already. I'm, my opinion, I'd like to see us take the burden off from us. The burden is right now is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to have it demolished and hauled away. Or, to me, that's a quarter of million-dollar burden. I'd like to see us either auction it off to a salvage company, and if it didn't go but for a dollar or five dollars, it saves us two hundred and fifty thousand to have it demolished and hauled off. Or, in the case of where it's at right now, if we could make more than a dollar and sell it, it would still take a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar burden off from us. And if we could sell it to a developer for a reasonable price.
That's what I said.
That would be fine with me.
Can we make the guarantee they're having it torn down?
Absolutely.
Take a little while to see.
I know, I agree with all of that. It's frightening to think that you're gonna tear it down. And not only is it the two hundred and fifty thousand, but it's staff time. It's gonna take, it's gonna be, you know, time is gonna be required to, to manage that and oversee a demolition project and to get bids on demos. And so it's not just the actual dollars. You're gonna have in-kind services of the city administrator, possibly even the attorney.
Building is on an upswing. Somebody don't want that piece of land.
And it's, it's a big burden, whether it's financial or whether it's labor.
Yes, sir.
And if we can get that burden off from us, that's, that's all I'm saying. And if we make money in the deal of getting it all from us, that's a plus.
Agree with you.
Okay, well, we'll use these talking points and put them to work and see what we can think of and come up, and maybe we'll all have some more firm proposals next time or discussion.
Well, it may fall in line with what Courtney, our city administrator, was talking about that, that she has had some conversation on already with Little Customs Homes, if that materializes.
What?
Little Customs Homes.
Well, Little Customs Home is a home builder, and you're talking about people that want to build homes. And that may be multifamily, may be single family or whatever, but it could fall in line with what, could. I didn't say it would. I said it could fall in line with what they're doing.
Have they, have they contacted you about that property?
No, they haven't.
Yeah.
Did you ever get what you needed from their social security background? Okay.
Kigoki. Kedogi. Is there anything, okay, so, mobile home, oh, school classrooms and school bus and gym bleachers, okay. I don't have anything else on my list, y'all didn't bring one. Yes, I do have a motion. Okay, we have a motion back to Mr. Walden. Okay, second back to Mr. Melander. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries.